So I want to note that Armand is here and myself and the same and then they have a committee call cabinet there. So at this point, I'll put out a motion to approve that it's
Out there.
January sixth.
Um, moving.
Hold on a second. We both approve.
I approve.
We go right into, you know, that place here. Two, which is our garbage collection ordinance. We missed you last year. How can see you?
Well, it was good to get back to to the office. Um, so we've been, you know, based upon our last discussions, made some changes and we see them as either underlying or strikes out in the draft that we received. Notably, in the first page, we added two definitions. One is abandoned cart and then the abandoned cart prevention plans. These were added as well as some other definitions. Because I graphed the language to try and deal with a man shopping carts. And that'll come up. So some of the additions and then I had received some comments on some of the previous definitions. So we kind of revamped a couple of them. So an automated recycling container, obviously that is the blue container and then an automated refuse container is the green. So we added some language to kind of call them out as to what they actually are. On the second page, see we added definition of business premises. Again, relating to grocery, uh, shopping carts. Also added a definition of electronic waste based upon a comment that I received in regards to recycling covered electronics. Uh, eliminated a duplicate definition of garbage. Go see a definition owner retailer, again relating to shopping carts and then physical containment system again. And then the definition of shopping cart on page three. Page four. So then one twenty eight two, little bit of changes. Yeah, one twenty two point two under littering. So treating abandoned shopping carts as litter. So attempted to craft one, what constitutes an abandoned shopping cart, the shopping cart owner retailer requirements. So the cars should be identified, the owners of the cars show daily retrieval. They're, we're asking that they be required to advance, have a, and present to the city an abandoned cart prevention plan in which, you know, they, you know, you seen like some carts have the, the wheel lock system. So then it leaves, gets a certain distance from the store, it locks the wheels. And having the cars named the owner of retailer business on the card. Evidence of written notification that the removal of carts from business, you know, what is their plan? How do they prevent their carts from being removed from their premises? And then C, obviously that the formatting is off, but the city may retrieve an abandoned cart from public property or private property with the consent of the property owner in the following circumstances, when the car, location of the cart, P, emergency service, when the cart is not identified, owner retailer, or when the city has contacted by telephone, written correspondence to owner and then the owner has failed to retrieve the cart within three business days. So I just, I'm not quite sure how we're going to do that one and then it maybe the, the way we want to do it is if it's in a public way that we retrieve the cart and then notify the property owner that we have retrieved the cart. And basically put it in impound yard and you have thirty days to come and get it. If you don't come and get it, then we're going to dispose it. You guys scrap it? We're gonna scrap it.
Is that sort of an annual waste?
I mean, it will add to what we're looking at additionally to guys don't, don't hang it to somewhere. Well, I mean, the steel metal curbs we bring to the Yeah, the plastic ones. I don't know if the metal we are particular because there are some steel in it, like the, the carry, the kind of the box part of it is plastic. So we are adding administrative cost to that of fifty dollars for each occurrence. To cover our retrieval and any administrative costs that would be just to retrieving of abandoned carts. And then putting in only exceptions if the, and the agent, if somebody has written permission from the retailer that they can take the cart off premises. So that was kind of the language they kind of crafted around how to deal with jumping.
I know it will be appreciated, whatever, be appreciated by the actual businesses.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's gonna be important when, when this is outward appearing that we sub notification to our
Right.
business partners and you know, that's important, this is gonna come into effect or if they'd like to come.
Yeah, I mean, based on some conversations that, I'm sorry, all this had in regards to, you know, they have been, they even the police have been in the past, collected them. And they've tried to reach down to the, you know, retailers and basically says they never gonna pick them up.
Right.
So I ended up having to dispose of them. Man, I, I don't see this, the retrieval as a kind of daily thing, probably like we would set up some type of schedule, whether it's, you know, once a week, you know, or if we get notice, notification from somebody. It wasn't, you know, you don't necessarily notice some things, but start driving around looking for them. There aren't a lot. Especially in certain areas. Yes, you know, so over time, we obviously, you identify those areas that are more prone to abandoned carts.
So do you think, you know, the, the timer in them who said three days, if it's gonna be once a week, should we look at that timeframe being a weekly basis?
Right.
Said abandoned three days.
Yeah, we're not going out for a week or two at least then. Well, it did, let me see, we'll get that section of this D, that would be that they recover it three days after we notify them that we have their cars. Okay, so this is after actually we're not retrieving the cars. So we kind of look at it from a perspective, we're thinking about how to roll this out. Would, over the course of say a month, we collected the cars. And then once at the beginning of the next month, we would notify the retailers as, look, we have ten of your cars that are located at, uh, Bulk Road impound yard, you know, you have three days to come back down.
Right, that was my next question, where are they gonna be?
So my thought was, there's an area down off Bulk Road between the treatment plant and the animal control facility. We have a materials yard there. But we have an area down there that we're looking at redeveloping as a municipal transfer station. So that to me was the kind of like the ideal, essentially the ideal location. It's, one, it's secured, uh, it's regularly patrolled and so intent, that was intent, that would happen now. So you, so do the police still bring them in or they just stop, they stop doing? I think they stopped. I don't know how much they did it. And they used to put it in their yard? Where they, they would put them over there. Where they have their crash cars and stuff like that all went through. Yeah, right. But our, it, it, as public works, we're going to do that now, but obviously it's you know, one, one of our responsibilities is to keep your public ways clean. So it does kind of make sense that it become a public works function. Again. No, I agree.
Do I need to screen them?
Police department. No, yeah, I, you know, I mean, it, it kind of, you know, it's, it's if I look at it as public litter then, you know, I mean, that's kind of my perspective, it would fall under public works. It's not really a police function. Unless it's, you know, like a, a cart in the middle of an intersection or, so that, you know, an immediate safety hazard. You know. Like, I think they were looking at it as, as a piece of stolen property. Right. You know, but if the people who own it weren't that keen on picking it up. You know, it's, it's energy that is, um, you know, used up that could be used elsewhere. Right, and you're never gonna find out who stole it. Yeah, right, yeah. You know, all right, so if we basically impound it and then give the property owner, if that car has an indication on it, notice that, look, we impounded eight of your carts around, drove down Franklin Drive a week or so ago. And I think there were eight TJ Maxx cars down on Franklin Drive.
So they don't currently know that same system that all these does.
Right. Yeah, I, I think more retailers are going to a containment system.
Right.
Because I think, one, the cost of the carts are getting much more expensive. Yeah. And, you know, I would think that, you know, maybe in the past, they accepted that loss, risk, risk loss. And but now I think the cart should get much more expensive and and surprisingly, when I was doing search for language, a ton of communities have this like, a similar language with regards to shopping carts.
So thank you, and you just got brought up several times by some very important constituents. One of which um, I'm hoping, what I would like to do is try and reach out to some of the businesses that this would impact, maybe some TJ Maxx. One of them, you know, and I would imagine their corporate office would have an understanding of this with their stores, businesses in other communities. But just to get their feedback, this is coming to light, they are also on that and so we're carrying
Yeah, for
What those, those costs.
What it looks like for them.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I gotta admit, it's, it can get very expensive.
Yeah.
So that was kind of the extent through trying to deal with the, the shopping cart issue as questioned. Let's maybe
It's our number, you should go by, um.
What's at the top? Yeah, uh. Put the one minute.
Did you see Michael hold that right?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, we have, okay, so, all right, article two with solid waste. Section one twenty eight dash eight. Dash eight, okay. Placement of containers for curbs on. All right, cut it. So our, although already prohibited in, in of placement of container, we wanted to reiterate, one, to prevent the damage, it's actually in C. The last sentence A. Putting in there that the containers should not be placed in Broadway between December first and March thirty first. Should be placed on a driveway or other location that's not to complete impeding buying operations. One, so we don't hit them and damage them and have to replace them. But it kind of goes also to the automated collection definition on the first page. It talks about the placement of containers, acceptable containers have to be placed within six feet of the pavement edge. Acceptable containers must be placed at least three feet from obstacles, including but not limited to utility poles, mailboxes, trees, parked cars. So there is kind of where you place it, what we're trying to do is prevent winter damage. Right. And then after C, based on some suggestions that were, or comments that were received, the suggestions, we had a D in regards to the bulk, bulky waste. Uh, all property survey that desire bulky waste culture required to obtain a bulky waste permit. bulky waste shall not be set out more than six days prior to scheduled collection. Well, theoretically, they can do that now. As if my collection day is on Friday. I can theoretically, I can start putting it out on Saturday. The day after it came. This day after my collection. And I could directly put it out a week. And then Thursday before three, if I call and get a permit, put a permit in, it would be picked up on Friday.
So that would allow sometimes for that bulky waste to be picked up by others.
Yes. Okay. That was kind of, but that was saying that.
Yes, I know, and I appreciate that, so I think that's
It is, it allows a timeframe. I also did address that scavenging um, based on suggesting for her. Then is scavenging the bulky waste is authorized as long as they're permission from the property owner, they're, i.e. assignments as free. Yeah, yeah, I always put a free sign on it. I did too, I always. And usually it goes, yeah.
I can go any sign now.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, I think that's great, I appreciate you so expanding on that. Instead of eliminating, you know, any sound change in this stuff.
Right, so, so it kind of gives you that, I mean, you know, somebody could, you know, if they think about it, they really can put it out there for six days.
Yeah.
Right. What we don't want is people putting it out there, sitting, and they want to just keep piling on it for a month, rather have them call it. We do it for six days, call it a week, it is people.
Right.
That six days does give an opportunity of there being anything that may be out there to be scavenged. I drove by somewhere recently. Maybe it was Saturday, looked like the whole house was out in front of me. Got a couple of those going to Yeah, Prospect Street maybe? I don't remember, I don't remember, it was, it was probably, yeah, I think it was actually, it's family on Prospect.
That's like the concern because, I mean, most people who are in a moving kind of mode, you know, they have to pay for their own, um, their own
Stopsto.
That was true.
Right.
You know, rather than the city sort of keeping on that responsibility a little bit. So we don't always, I mean, we don't talk necessarily about planning the whole place.
Right.
Um, I don't know how you would do that, but
It would be more of a timeframe, like, you know, I love to do it twice a year or something like that. Yes, that's how we would limit it.
I know that you mentioned that.
Yeah. Some Which, which, which communities do do that, it's not. Very similar to the way we do yard waste. Yeah. We do bulky waste to quarterly or by Yeah.
Right.
We have to designate week or two weeks and Yeah. Issue press releases and we just picked everything up and for the rest of the year, we don't pick anything. Right.
That might be a little hard to implement initially.
Um, initially, but I think if you go from maybe do it quarterly and drop it down to like twice a year, if that was your goal, um, do it that way, little by little. You know, maybe monthly, quarterly, and then twice a week, or twice a year, to, if that's where you want to be. So that it's done incrementally, so it's not just like a shot. Although, we also got to look at the cost of all this too, because, you know, that's, that's where we're running into the bottom line issue.
Yeah, I, I don't want to look at this too many times, but I'm wondering, um, you know, maybe it's not a change in ordinance, maybe it's, you know, determined by notice from public works or something, it's that. So we can do
League of ordinance. Yeah, I mean, and so we didn't put any language in the ordinance that designates any particular decline.
Right.
Right, so prior, prior to last year, when we implemented the permit, we basically picked up all of the city every state of that.
Right.
So the trucks roving in the entire city, every day picking up bulky waste. But what we did the permit, now it's based upon your collection day. So in only a particular part of the city is, is that once a week. Right.
So how does that work?
It's actually working really well. Have, have you noticed a reduced amount of bulky waste? Yes, yes, significant reduction in the amount of bulky waste. Okay. And additionally, yeah, the amount of mattresses, the amount of weight, that's, obviously, we have occurrences. Yeah. You know, uh, if whole, our foreman has to chase down a property and try and find out, you know, get in touch with the owner, remind them that Yeah, especially if they're not living in the town or the state. Right, right. Which is, which I know has been an issue in the past.
Okay.
Um, then in E, which is just, uh, that the container should not be overfilled. That would create potential for spillage when they're empty. Because the, the drivers are not going to get out of the truck to pick up the litter. And then items placed in a refuse container should be placed in a bag, bagging, you know, so everything that goes in the trash container, the green one, should be in a bag. And then items in a recyclable container should not be placed in a bag. So we want to just remind people that what you put in recyclables, don't want to put them in a bag. And the pounds that gets pulled off the line and then the bag, if it gets by the the first line, then it gets into the machine, bags find out the machines and create issues at the recycling facility. Uh, except the white paper newspapers, that stuff, place it in paper bag. Paper is okay, plastic is not. Paper is okay, plastic is not.
Okay.
Um, then, then somebody brought to my attention one twenty eight nine B one. Kind of not, uh, why we have a compulsory material separation. If we want people to, so deleted that April first to December first.
Good. So with deleting number two of that same section, three becomes two and that
Right, yeah, so then it would be, need to be renumbered, yes.
Yeah.
But I didn't want to renumber it, just as, so you can see what the change is. But what ended up happening really is that two and three were combined with just one.
Okay.
What happens with that current yard waste? It is recycled, most of the majority of it goes to supremes, very, very permanent, um, yard waste. Green wood. You know, in some towns actually do it themselves and then they sell the compost of American spray. You know, and they sell the, the soil. Do you have to permit a composting facility? It has to be permitted. So just to kind of expand upon that a little bit, one of the things, you know, I talked about redeveloping municipal transfer station. Uh, woody vegetation is one of the things that we're looking to do there, so that if we do, so like Christmas trees, chip them up or Christmas trees would be great if we could find a a farmer's, we had goats. Goat farm, a goat farm, that would be, say, hey, we got a lot of Christmas trees.
It's a great idea to mine up here, it's all nice.
Yeah.
Then the farms have goats.
So as part of that redevelopment, which is in process, but it still weighs out was, um, having that whole wood collection area. So if we chip it, then potentially offering the wood chips to the residents.
Yeah.
Um, you know, as a bedding material, but we have, we kind of have to be a little careful because any of the trees that are fested have to be treated differently, but Yeah. Because they're not clean wood, tree wood, considered green wood. Um, so then those have to be culled out and they, yeah, treat itself.
Sometimes the dollar signs, you know, this, um, you know, area, I'm trying to have some savings.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
You know.
Trying to, you know, affect savings, so like, you know, with the transfer station, we said, you know, being an opportunity for residents to bring their material down there. Looking, you know, as we kind of mentioned in one of the council meetings, I think Linda mentioned, we don't want to do a swap shop, you know, people who are old small clients, send the trash because, you know, they want to deal with it, they're not bulky waste, so they They want a new, the new model or something. Right, so, but they're probably perfectly good and
The part for that, you know, the
Yeah.
Spot market, it's like, you know.
Yeah, there, there's, um, the South River Transfer Station, they have a swap shop where people from, and they leave stuff or they buy something. It's a good idea.
Very dangerous, like for something like this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, like to go through it.
Yes. Right. That is
Okay.
And then C, uh, one, just made some minor changes, said on, so the newspaper, white paper. Originally it said securely tied with flat bones weighing not more than thirty pounds. I think that's leftover. Yeah. From that, and I got a comment from a resident that, you know, why do we have to tie them? And you, you don't. You don't, that anymore. You don't even have to put them in big bags. No. It makes it a little more convenient for the sorting lines at the MRF, the recycling facility.
Yeah.
But, and in our discussion with them, sometimes the bundles will just tear apart, but then sometimes they don't. So what we wanted to do is really kind of discourage people from actually tying them together, like they used to. And then D was added to specially handled recyclables, electronic waste, waste barrels, balls, those type of things, which are handled by our transfer station. And I think, oh, and then one twenty fifteen to reiterate the bulky waste. That's reworded, that's not highlighted. But chain scavenging of bulky waste set out for collection is permissible with the consent of the owner thereof. And I wasn't sure if in the ordinance you wanted to put like, for example, placing a free sign on it. I don't think you mentioned that. Is that, is that appropriate for an ordinance? Sure, yeah. Okay. I'll add that with parentheses.
With some signage, maybe not, I don't know. But some people may put a sign out and say ten dollars or something, I don't know. So with that
Right, if somebody wants to drop off ten bucks, so why not?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so then we would use that as an example, um, the owner placing a free sign.
Or some signage, you know, that
Some signs, yeah. Available. Available to To take, yeah, or something like that, to take to I just wasn't sure To acquire. Oh, you can Okay. Uh, because technically, if it's stealing, if you don't have a sign, it's a graffit, it's a
Also, because technically, if it's stealing, if you don't have a signage that is drafted, it's stealing my dresser. Well, it's implied though, if it's at the curb side, it's implied, it's implied, yeah, otherwise.
Yeah, and so trying to differentiate that from scavenging out of the barrels. Because we don't want people scavenging out.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for tuning in.
Uh, and I think that is good.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
So what do you think we're at in terms of bringing this forward? I know that this was posted on the website.
This latest version isn't, and I didn't want it to be done, so no more regards to that.
But let's.
But if you're comfortable with the changes, then, um, I can finalize it and we'll post the first version on the website.
Yeah.
Um, and the free recommendations just to kind of refer in regards to how we should present it. So looking at, uh. Uh, you know, have an introductory statement, the big picture, you know, explain why, what the major changes are. Request kind of a comment. And you know how the goals are control the cost and. Defining neighborhood and community, protecting the environment, you know, what's what's the purpose, right?
Yep.
And it's not just, you know, from trash.
No.
No, it's about keeping our community clean and inviting, uh, so, uh. Looking at how do we kind of pull that out, you know, you know, and and give, you know, in the public hearing. Here's what it's costing us.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Here's the picture, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Also, maybe even some photos of some areas where shopping carts were given those.
Yeah.
Ten fifteen shopping carts in a certain area, which not, um, not everybody is aware of these problems that we're discussing. You know, within the city.
Right.
You know, I mean, I think a lot of people are, but I'm not sure that everybody is. This is why we're talking about it.
And, you know, I mean, a lot of the comments were because of misinterpretation of. Language and that, I think we put the rest is the dates of contained, the dates and times.
Yes.
Times.
Container, times of container collection is not changing.
Mm-hmm.
So I think just for clarity, so now, um, what I'd like to do is Armaun, if you could.
Yes.
Have a motion to, um, move this out of our ordinance today. With, uh, the intent to have a public hearing, um.
Public hearing.
And I I'm gonna say I'd like to move a public hearing to like sometime in April, uh, with the N L. Time for it to be.
Out there. Reviewed and notified of the hearing and they could look at the the draft ordinance.
But we'll talk about terms of appropriate marketing, um.
Yeah.
Information on our social media and our website.
Yeah. Good.
So.
Yes, so I will move the, um.
For Heather's sake, for me, uh, can you do that submission?
Yeah, yeah, I make a motion.
One very.
To move, uh, the chapter one twenty eight solid waste, uh, ordinance, uh, to a public hearing. Sorry, draft ordinance to a public hearing.
And so if we were to, maybe we could add, maybe in that regard, so, um, so if we look at.
Yeah.
The sixth, you know, I would go to like April seventeen.
Uh, are we getting on the budget stuff? No, we should.
No, the first budget thing starts on the eighteen.
Okay.
Does that work? Well, we do some plenty of time, I think, to have a public. Two, right?
The more time I have, the better.
So is that work?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, so, so this is moving seventeen.
Yes.
So you add that to the motion and I'll second that Heather. Number one.
Yeah. Different from the previous, yeah.
All right, well, um. But let's move on to the agenda at this time.
Mm-hmm.
We are looking at number three, the discussion about our tree ordinance. And Monica, as long as.
Yeah.
Tree warden.
Tree warden.
Mr. Drew.
Yeah, um, so obviously at the public hearing, we got some comments, um, so we're back thinking some of those comments. Uh. Provide some of the language, so session one eighty one four. And items D and F. Uh, the tree ward is a review, maintain a list of notable stored trees within this, within the, should say within, um. It's actually, those are posted and, um, not on our website.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. But they are on a state notable tree inventory, yes, currently we only have two. Um, one is a nineteen oh two pinot here on Main Street, and then one is Jeffy Ball.
You created them, they, um.
So what what we.
So you're just creating a list.
We're just creating a list because they're on private property.
Yeah.
You know, I don't. There's the real mechanism for us to, you know, you send your cards to. No trees other than, you'll make the community aware, maybe not, like the the pinot, those are here on Main Street and Platte. Now, does yours yours have a plaque?
No, it doesn't, my, I'm curious.
It's your plaque.
I should put a plaque nineteen forty five painted, so.
So, um, those are the trees that are on the state notable tree list for Torington. Um, but, you know, any tree can be nominated. We go through that process appropriately. Community can nominate a tree, but, um.
Okay.
So just based on that, we will create the list, and we also have it in, we add them in our GPS layer. Of our tree inventory, just not that they're public trees, but they are listed as a local tree.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so we, uh, we only make other, you know, I saw that we did pass the tree ordinance at our city council meeting.
City.
We.
We tabled it.
We tabled it, okay, so let's put it on, uh, here, put it on the agenda. We don't need another public hearing, I'd say, just stand there.
No.
So I'd like to. So I'd like to have it on S today or if you could put it on the agenda for our next council meeting. Before, even I guess, Armaun, if you could move this with the amendments for the, as that were made, I'm.
Do you wanna finish the, you know, amendment? What we, what we can just.
Oh, I see, okay.
Kinda like what we were talking with the trees and F was just that. So if we were to do remnants of trees that aren't infested or things like that, may be offered to the community. We had a kind of request, and actually, we just got a request the other day, uh, from, you know, could we offer the trees that we take down to the community? So and and I think. From what happened in the back from a legal perspective.
What are you gonna do with the other ones?
Yeah, right, we're gonna pay to have that processed.
Right. Yeah, so I'd say, I'd say the answer is yes, okay?
Yeah.
So that's, that's assuming that there's no infestation of the tree.
Right.
Just.
That is clean green wood.
Okay.
And then, uh, under section four.
I see.
Uh, one eighty one six. Some questions came about elaborating, you know, um, when, you know. If the city found it desirable to plant private property, under what circumstances? Um, I would, you know, so I kinda tried to lay out some of the circumstances we could consider. Um, that as a request of the property owner and or the community. Uh, and that the planting will enhance or beautify the highway or grounds of the community as a whole. The planting does not create an obstruction interfering with public utilities. And the planting will not create any sightline issues for pedestrian vehicular traffic. So, um, under some of the considerations. If we were wanted to place a public tree on private property. Things that we would consider in making that.
I sort of been skipping ahead with these amendments, I apologize, but then you're on one, um, C.
C, you know, the only thing they added without a valid permit issued, I know this came up at the the the, the council meeting. But they have to keep in mind, this is only a public property. So, you know, it is like, I think, I don't want. You know, it says telephone poles, and there was some discussions of, uh. The state requires the telephone poles. But I don't think we want people putting flyers up on, you know, our light poles on Franklin Plaza, our red poles on.
Yeah.
Our, you know, those aren't. The proper, in my opinion, they are not the proper forum. To advertise in and then, you know, and you, you have sandwich boards, you have the, you know. Kind of like the election signs, poster boards. And in 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 today's, the social media.
Right.
Okay, so I'm I'm okay with the language, I don't need to root this forward, but.
Yeah, that's fine.
Two other, um, items, what we need, but on our on the agenda that we need our attention.
Yeah.
So, um. Armaun, with that motion again.
Yeah, with the motion to move, um. The chapter one eighty one tree shrouds away vegetation, draft ordinance to the city council. And for a public hearing, we we already had that, no public hearing, just the city council, um, review and vote.
And approve.
And approve. I know, vote, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got that, Heather, the second is, um, approved, okay.
I'd approve it.
So we're gonna move on to number four, um, I think this should go.
So.
It's the discussion regarding this number one.
They kind of. What were the changes? I mean, I didn't, um. Recall.
This one, um, Senator Valdez told me that there weren't like any changes, and I'm pretty much ready to go to public hearing.
Oh, okay, then, yeah.
That's simple, all right, so, Armaun, can I use a motion then to move this for a public hearing?
Yes.
It's set a date for.
This, yeah.
Actually, why don't we try and set it for March twentieth?
March twentieth, okay, so that's the one eighty dash two, correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, like move, uh, ordinance one eighty dash two, uh. These, no removal ordinance to, uh, a public hearing on March twenty?
Yes.
Twenty twenty three?
Yeah, second, um.
Hi.
All right, so we can move on to, um, number five, discussion regarding the care rent commission. Can I understand this has really a, you know, statutory.
Mm-hmm.
Mandating, um.
Yes.
To review, uh, in the ordinance committee, so is that the usual study?
Sure, this is a, uh, I'm giving you a version of the fair rent commission ordinance, but. Uh, just for the committee's, uh, knowledge, this is a placeholder only. It's a kind of a knockdown version, actually, the mayor helped put this together. We have to have a fair rent rent commission ordinance in place by July first. It's based upon, uh, nineteen general statute seven dash one forty eight B. And other, other statutes following that. What I've done today, tonight, it's passed out, allow, uh, for the cute, fair rent commission that they keep, which we should have a copy of, and I will make sure that, uh. Commissioner Kevin Aaron gets a copy of that as well. But I was, I think, uh, you already received copies of this sometime ago when the law was passed, I'm not sure if the mayor got it to you. But, uh, this is just a reinforcement of that, I would suggest you review it. Uh, review those questions and answers, uh, because there, there's gonna be a lot of questions, I think. Regarding this ordinance as we go along, I agree, uh, so. Would be, I think, uh, time well spent to become very familiar with the law and how it's going to apply. It has, as a town with more than twenty five thousand population, we are required to have this by state law. So, uh, and there's gonna be a lot of, I'm sure, a lot of pros and cons to it, uh. But that's why I say what I've submitted to you tonight merely is a placeholder, there's gonna be some changes made, so I wouldn't. Relie too much on what you have before, like just wanted to get something on the docket so that we can bring it up at each meeting. Hopefully, I'm not sure when we're gonna have another meeting, but hopefully we can have another version of this ready by the next ordinance committee meeting.
And we'll set that date tonight, but I do, you know, was this passed in the last legislative session?
Yes, it was, and and then, actually, there's legislation to be before the legislature right now, so there may be some changes even this time. So we're not quite sure, you know, where it was spent, but it was, this is a law, this was passed last time around, yes. Seven, seven dash one forty eight B.
My, my, obviously, I think I've got some initial. Comments about it.
Oh, I'm sure you would.
And, um, I do think, I almost feel, I know it's under the ordinance, maybe it's subcommittees, uh, review, but this is, um. Something I think the entire council should be aware of, um, versus the members of our council. That's the two of us, um, on that, we care that, I do, I do feel that maybe copies of this. Could be at least given to the entire council.
Review of it at the next council meeting before our next ordinance meeting.
I I would be, I would be happy to give the council, be just an update with a question and answers, I. I would hesitate to put before them a an ordinance which. By, as I said, which is only a placeholder, it's really only something to get on your agenda and. Be glad to talk about it to the council and provide them with questions and answers or the other information. But this fair rent commission, uh, will have some substantial powers in terms of setting rents and. And investigations, it'll have subpoena powers, so it's gonna be, uh, kind of a big deal for Torington. And I I agree with you, but I think it might be something that the council might should become aware of sooner rather than later.
And I'd almost like to have my lawyer just let the body come and, you know, talk to us a little bit about why, um, this has become.
We.
A deterrent for municipality of our size.
Mean the delegation.
The delegation, yeah.
Yeah.
Because this is, um, definitely, you know, you're talking about power to be able to separate rent, you know, prevent rates. And if it's too high, when I'm not, this is talking about eviction and, um. Really scares me, and I'm gonna tell you right now on the record, you do not wanna be a part of this mission. Um, but I do think, um, it means to have a much broader discussion with the city council. Even though it's under the ordinance, you know, some of its purview to actually form the commission. So today was only for discussion only.
Yes.
So I think what I'd like to do is set another meeting for the ordinance committee, possibly invite some of the members of our council. And maybe not have a lot of other items on that agenda, uh.
Well, we just got rid of.
Three.
Three.
But you never know what comes to force them.
Yes. This, this, this might be a standalone.
Yeah.
It's a good idea because it it is new and, uh, it is large as far as, um, the, what this, uh. Fair rent commission can do, so I think we need to.
Fair rent commission can do, so I think we need to stand, standalone, uh, on the agenda.
That's the only thing, yeah.
Sure, standalone, we're not having anything to it.
So can we try and have an ordinance committee about April third?
Yeah, sure.
Five thirty?
Five thirty?
Yeah.
And will, um, if possible, if there are any other items, that meeting next year that not.
We, um, we need at the meeting besides council members, is there anybody else, and you, is there anybody else you could pick up in the?
The hotel, the mayor.
In this, well, the mayor, is there any, uh, other city, uh, people that might. Uh, should be there, uh, that might have some knowledge and help in formulating this? You have to tell me right now. Yeah, just thinking about, about, I'd be single within the city that might have, uh, some expertise in the areas.
Right, that's a good suggestion.
This is a good thought. Let me, let, let's think about that. You might wanna, thank you, invite others. Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, this is probably informing the public that.
Oh, do you need a, I mean, a, a building official, do you have a building official, maybe, maybe, yeah, or might, might be a thought. Even risk of it, yeah.
I just wonder how many landlords actually know about this particular law and what's coming down the line. I mean, they're not a part of any trade association that represents them in Hartford, um. Homeowners Association, you know, this is gonna be pretty, pretty major. So with that, we have a date set for our next ordinance committee, uh, third, and I'd like to call for motion to.
So.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Paul. For first meeting in the lineup this evening, this is a, uh. Regular joint meeting for board of trustees, this is the employees retirement fund, and the board of trustees of the police enforcement suspension funds. For the revenue today is Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty three. It is now six thirty five P M. We do have a quorum. Uh, both boards of trustee. So we should be able to get through on agenda items before we get into the general committee standing.
In the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible,天地一君主.
All right. Everyone's wanting to agenda this evening is I, I will make a change in motion. By the board of trustees and city employees retirement fund, and the board of trustees of the police enforcement pension fund. To approve the minutes of the break of the joint meeting, which was held on August first, twenty twenty two. Thank you, councilman, my name is.
Second, mayor.
And second, I, um, Commissioner. Any questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And two, I want to take a motion, again, by the board of trustees, and I thought this one, excuse me, is just the board of trustees, please sign an extension. To approve the minutes of the special meeting, which was held on March first, twenty twenty three.
So.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second, Commissioner Galway, questions or comments on the minutes? Harry, not all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any post? Whoop extensions? Moving on to item number three. Uh, at this point, it doesn't really require a motion, but I would turn the floor over to Christopher Hatchram, the fiduciary advisor. So we'll do a presentation, um, for the police enforcement suspension fund against the employees retirement fund. Um, I'm assuming everybody has a copy of the report, thank you, so we're turning this on.
Thanks, Madam Erin. Good to see folks this evening. I'm a colleague in Tony's twenty seats and, um. We'll get caught up quickly on the portfolios and the markets and a couple of, uh, action items for your consideration. And Heather, if we bring up that larger deck, and I'll also give folks as reference to the page numbers, if we turn to page five. Of your booklets, you'll see there, just a, a very quick visual reminder of our governing calendar. Like you'll remember, Tony kind of follows this protocol quarter to quarter. Uh, there it is, and this quarter, we focus on, on asset allocation view. And so each year, we survey the markets and look at data, and we try to forecast what we think the breaking areas. With your portfolios, investment, performance, and a risk playing play over the next ten, twenty years. And we use that information as the basis to make sure that the portfolios are still appropriately allocated and consistent with our best thinking. And consistent with the objectives you've set forth for those asset pools, so. There's, I, with great apologies, there's lots of data in the next several pages. We're gonna hit the highlights for you. And we'll be zoning on what we want you to focus on and consider. And if we, uh, do that, turn to page eight. And again, a lot of numbers on the page here, we will go through all these, but what we will tell you, and if you all know. Last year, twenty twenty two was a pretty challenging year in the markets. And it was a challenging year for both equity investing and fixed income investing. And it was a painful year, and we'll talk about some of those numbers in just a minute or two. What it does do in somewhat of a counterintuitive fashion, that it resets the table moving forward in terms of our expectations for markets. And front and center, if you look at the upper right hand corner of your page eight. You'll see year over year, the expectations for the fixed income markets have gone up dramatically. Right, and that's because interest rates have gone dramatically from where they were a year ago. And that has some implications for the way the portfolios are built today, and we'll talk again to that momentarily. You see in the middle of the range there, fixed, uh, excuse me, equity markets. About the same as they were last year, though the international markets were forecasting to have slightly higher returns. And on the right hand corner of the page, you see the year over year changes to some of the, what we call the diversifying asset classes, real assets and those type of things. And as you remember, you do have a measure of real assets in your pension plan. So this is the information we use, uh, and we put this into the system, and we generate an expected return through your investment programs. And if you turn to page ten. Again, with apologies, because there's lots of numbers on these pages, but if you look, you'll see what we've done is we've highlighted your current portfolios as they're allocated today. Everyone see the blue highlight there, it runs across the upper left-hand corner of the page. And you can see we break out under the hood, the different mixes of assets you have in your two asset pools today. And you can see that that portfolio is expected or forecasted to return about seven point nine percent a year over the next, uh, twenty years or so. We know that doesn't happen every year, right, because there's volatility markets, but with the benefit of time, that's what we think if your portfolio is poised to do. Right below the blue highlighted line, you'll see what we call the optimized portfolio. And that's where we take the benefit of those capital market inputs that we just talked about. We marry it to your current allocations, and we save there even a more optimal mix of assets. That even enhances the return and risk profile of your portfolios moving forward. And there is ones, and there were some small changes that we're recommending to the two pension plan allocations. If you turn to page eleven, I think you'll see it much more intuitively, and I know the numbers are small. But you'll see for the two plans that, uh, the grid there shows you that, that. The current target allocations, then the so-called optimized allocation, right next to it, everyone see those two columns? And you see there, there are not dramatic changes. Wholesale changes in the larger allocation of the two portfolios. The amount of money that you've got invested in fixed income, the amount of money that you have invested in domestic, international equities doesn't really change that much. But you do see there under the hood, if you go run your, your finger down the schedule, that we are recommending within fixed income. Adding a couple of new strategies, some inflation protection securities with fidelity. Some dedicated high income strategy with artisan, taking Eaton Vance out of the program. And then you'll see down in domestic equity, a manager swap going from Boston Trust to Hotchkiss and Lyman. And what we're trying to do here again, right, is drive back to that optimized mix from an allocation perspective. Work with our manager research team to give you our highest conviction ideas. And, and recycle some of the capital to direct your assets accordingly. And the, the takeaway from all of that effort is what you see displayed on, on page eleven. So the, the recommendation to the, to the committees tonight is to consider these small changes to the mixes of assets. To align with kind of our very latest best thinking around capital markets and, and investment managers and strategies. So let me pause there for a minute, because I know there's a lot there. Happy to take questions from committees or reports that you may have. Looks, looks like everyone's, okay, so that's, that's, that's our standing recommendation, um. If you consider this evening, have no questions, or maybe move on with some quick updates, or, and we'll go from there.
Excuse me, you said you want us to watch, which, okay, are you talking fixed income?
Yeah, if you, if you look at it, and it's, I apologize, a busy schedule, but if you look at the thing, fixed income, right, and you compare column to column.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have some, the inflation protected securities with fidelity, you see that, uh, two percent. There's not an allocation there today, and then if you work your way a little bit further down in the fixed income section. Take Eaton Vance out of the program and replace them, send that point dollar for down, or replace them with artisan high income. You see the strategy right below it?
Yeah.
And then if you look within equities, you'll see, um, similarly, Boston Trust is a manager today. Take them out and then recycle that capital on Hotchkiss.
And you're making suggestions, wow.
Also, when we go through that ultimate, we go through that asset allocation exercise that I just mentioned, right? So we're surveying the markets and where we think the best opportunities are. Right, so that's what's kind of driving these smaller switches you see in the different categories at a high level. And then we're talking to our investment manager research team and saying, we're in the highest conviction managers we have to implement this strategy under the hood. And that's where you see some of those name changes we just highlighted. So the why is to get the portfolios on a forward basis, we think in the best position to meet the objectives of each of them. Okay, okay. So let's do this, um, let's get caught up quickly on the, the portfolios and what transpired last year in the fourth quarter. So turn to page fourteen. And again, I promise, we'll go quickly here, and there's a ton of exhibits on this page. You remember, beginning last year, the Federal Reserve started to raise interest rates dramatically, and they did that, right, since inflation was starting to ramp. They were trying to get inflation under control. And when you move interest rates higher, the immediate timeframe, that has a headwind effect on fixed income returns. So look in the upper right-hand corner of page fourteen, and you'll see there what we've done. We've plotted equity and fixed income returns together on a calendar year basis over the last several decades. And unfortunately, look where twenty twenty two results, right, a really difficult year for both bond and equity investing. Equities last year were down about twenty percent, bonds were down about thirteen percent. Um, a really, really challenging year, on the heels of three or four pretty good years prior to that. And we'll read a couple of those numbers in a minute. They are making headway on the inflation front, right, and that's why you've seen markets more recently start to perform a bit better. So the fourth quarter was a good one for the portfolios, as we'll see in a minute, and year to date through Friday night. Markets were performing fairly well also. And they're making, and the reason for that is they're making headway on the inflation front, primarily, look at page fifteen in the lower right-hand corner. And you'll see there quickly, you see we've plotted a couple of inflation measures, you see how they're starting to come down. And that's what, that's the action that the Fed is trying to drive. Uh, and markets and investors should take this as comfort that they're making headway there, and again, that's why we see better performance, uh, in the capital markets more recently. One last big picture thing, and then we'll segue right over to portfolios on page sixteen. You'll see asset class returns on the top back of the page. The vertical bars you see are the full calendar year twenty twenty two, right? And it was really, as I mentioned, really a nowhere to hide type of an investing environment last year. But you do see for the fourth quarter, the encircled numbers, and they are generally positive. Everyone see those numbers there? If you work your way across the page, both fixed income and equity returns were positives. Around two thirds of the way over there, international developed equities up over seventeen percent in the fourth quarter alone. So as I mentioned earlier, right, you're starting to see markets stabilize and perform a little bit better, which obviously is, is encouraging. Any questions on? Big picture? Look like it, okay, just stop me if there are, of course. So let's get, let's actually get to the two portfolios quickly. Uh, I'm gonna turn to page, all the way up to page thirty three, if you want. So this is the employee plan, and as you know, the employee and the great fire share the same allocation, saying the share managers, the numbers are very, very similar, as you'd expect. So upper left-hand corner of page thirty three, you'll see the employee plan was up about eight point seven percent in the fourth quarter. Right, so a pretty decent quarter, um, for the portfolio. We're certainly encouraged, uh, outperforming to the broad markets. Again, you mentioned the way you number, right, a tough year. But longer term, when you look at the track record, right, and are more consistent with expectations around generating decent absolute returns. Uh, and I mentioned again, twenty twenty two difficult, but twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty one are strong double-digit years for your portfolio. So I think you're in pretty good working order. Upper right-hand corner of that same exhibit, you'll see the port, that the employee plan added forty one point eight billion dollars. Everyone see that number at the end of December? As of Friday night, it was up to forty three point five million dollars. So as I mentioned earlier, right, twenty twenty three's been pretty good, and the portfolios have been kind of participating in that better result. From an allocation perspective, the right-hand corner, just in terms of where we stand tonight. I know we have some allocation, uh, actions pending, but from the largely existing allocations, the portfolios are pretty close to target here. You can see them all right here in the corner. If you compare the actual balance to the target base, you're in pretty good working order. And I think that's kind of the story that Tony tells you all the time. Anything on employee? I will note on page thirty two, you will see, we did elevate one manager to discuss. A BlackRock strategy with the, uh, the man, a member of the team, the portfolio management team retiring. Uh, at the end of March, but not something we think is ultimately a cause concern or require a change. It's just something we want you to be aware of. Again, no action to contemplate, otherwise the rest of the rosters, it's all very, uh, strong and working order. All right, let's forge ahead here quickly on page forty. Police and Fire, the exact same set of data. So again, you see in the upper left-hand corner, right, you mentioned the portfolios largely share the same allocations. The same managers in the performance as you would expect, right, very similar, uh, to what we had experienced with the employee plan. Everyone see there, a strong eight point seven percent number for the police and fire in the fourth quarter. And, and the longer dated numbers, again, in the trend, they're kind of consistent with expectation. If you look in the upper right-hand corner of the page, you'll see at the end of the calendar year, just a touch shy of seventy one million dollars of invested assets. Everyone see that number? This is for police and fire. Uh, as of Friday night, the portfolio is at seventy three point eight million dollars. So similar to the employee plan, right, you're seeing that better performance start to flow into the investment balances with the big numbers we've seen in, um. And results we've seen, excuse me, in twenty twenty three. Similarly, in the lower right-hand corner of page forty, uh, a pretty good working order from an allocation perspective, and, and real, real deviations from target as, as designed. Everyone, votes all set on updates on two plans. We don't need to bring it up on the screen, but just a quick reference for the committee, so OPEB. Uh, at the end of the year was at about one point four five million dollars. Remember, you've got three Vanguard funds that we're using. Tony, I can probably describe to you in the past, right, just trying to get that up in size now. Just trying to get that open sized up and you participate in the markets, but we're not using active managers yet. But you're well allocated and diversified and the portfolio was up six point seven percent in the fourth quarter. And looking on Friday night, you were up about, I think about seventy thousand dollars year to date twenty twenty three. We have the portfolio at one point five three million dollars for OPEB Trust. So again, participating in those better markets that we mentioned. That's the quick update on OPEB and let me pause there again. Anything on either of the two plans? Or on OPEB or folks? Good, so no recommended changes for OPEB. No recommended additions to OPEB, just the one top page eleven.
Okay. I will call for questions and any recommendations. When we make the motion, it can be questions specific to the asset allocation adjustments. But you have other questions regarding the report? Okay, now we move into the action items. Item number two. I will entertain a motion. This would be the Board of Trustees for the Police and Fire Department Pension Fund to approve the recommended changes as presented by the Dushan and Byke. For the Police and Fire Department Pension Fund, those recommended changes appear on page eleven of the quarterly investment review for the fourth quarter of twenty twenty two. Do I have a motion? So who? Thank you, Commissioner Val. A second, Police and Fire.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments? Unrecommended recommendations? Hearing none, Police and Fire, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I can't tell on the screen. Okay, all right, so motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're in item five. Now this would be the Board of Trustees for the City Employees Retirement Fund. Same motion to approve the recommended changes as presented by the Dushan and Byke for the City Employees Retirement Fund, as reflected on page eleven of the quarterly investment review for the fourth quarter of twenty twenty two. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Councilman Menegia for the second. And seconded by Councilwoman Luett. Questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think this motion also carries. All right, we appreciate the report. All of the data number six. This is the Board of Trustees for the City Employees Retirement Fund, pursuant to Council Board Logan twenty two twelve, City Hall Supervisors. I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective December third, twenty twenty two for Gail Sartori, Deputy Assessor for the City of Torington after eighteen point two six years of service. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Councilman Menegia.
Second.
Thank you, from Mr. Cody. So motion made and seconded. Are there questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective January twenty seven, twenty twenty three. This is for Richard Starry, Custodian for the City of Torington for the education after twenty six point zero eight years of service. This is the City employees.
So.
Thank you, Councilman Menegia. And seconded by Councilwoman Luett. Are there questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept, this is for, I'm sorry, for the Police and Fire Department Pension Fund, passed me, Council fifteen, Local four four two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective July thirty one, twenty twenty two for Thomas Rulo, Lieutenant of the City of Torington Police Department after twenty five point one two years of service.
So move. Second.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod, and seconded by Commissioner McElroy. Are there questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective September thirty, twenty twenty two for James Delay, Sergeant for the City of Torington Police Department after twenty point zero five years of service. So thank you, Commissioner Val, and seconded by Commissioner McElroy. Questions or comments on this calculation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And item ten, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective January nineteen, twenty twenty three for Kevin Tevin, Detective for the City of Torington Police Department after twenty five point oh two years of service.
So move.
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner Council. Oh.
That was a.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you, seconded by James Foley. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There being no further business before this, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Commissioner McLeod, seconded by Commissioner McElroy. All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll move on to the next page. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council on WPCA. For the record, it is Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty three. We are the City Hall Auditorium, with one council member participating via Zoom. And for, for the record, presence in the auditorium, I have Councilman Menegia, Councilwoman Luett, Councilman Kevin Arrow, and participating via Zoom, we have Councilman Walter. So we do have our forum, I'll write it down in number one. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with section four E in the City Council WPCA, the legal procedure. Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow, seconded by Councilwoman Luett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open to the public, is there anyone for the public to sit across the board? Same number, we'll do the data each. And I'll take this in three parts. Item two A, I'll entertain a motion to accept the public hearing, meeting minutes regarding the treaties from February twenty one, twenty twenty three. I hear Councilwoman Menegia and seconded by Councilwoman Luett. All right, questions or comments on these meeting minutes? I'll call that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to accept the public hearing, meeting minutes regarding the Aprils and traffic from February twenty one, twenty twenty three.
So move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Luett, seconded by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Questions or comments on these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two C, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from February twenty first, twenty twenty three.
So.
Thank you, Councilwoman Luett, seconded by Councilwoman Luett. Questions on these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? She carries. Moving into item three. I will entertain a motion to authorize a mere to execute documents for the National Opioid Litigation Settlement, allowing the city to exercise its option to add into the settlement. Thank you, Councilwoman Luett, seconded by Councilwoman Menegia. Are there questions or comments?
Just a little explanation.
So I did try to provide to an executive summary of what this is. The board, those are the members that were members at the time when the City of Torington agreed to become a part of the class action suit for the national litigation against distributors and manufacturers of the opioids. This is the second settlement. The city participated in the first round, which occurred in the end of twenty twenty one. We had all been receiving some of the payments and that was under the Johnson and Johnson or Jenson settlement. This settlement is for the Tiva Aragon Civil Rights Law needs at more. I don't have the amounts that the City of Torington will be receiving as a part of the participation only because those calculations are based on how many municipalities opted to participate. Just for the board's further information, I have been appointed by Governor Lamont to participate and represent the municipality in the opioid task force municipal task force committee. So I will be involved with and a part of the discussions as to how these funds will be best used for the remediation of the crisis that was created by these. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item four. I'll entertain a motion to read out the Fair Housing Resolution number one four three dash two three nine and the Fair Housing Policy Statement dated March, March sixth, twenty twenty three.
So.
Councilman Menegia? Second.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Are there questions?
I think there'll be a lot of questions as we move forward. How we establish the Fair Housing Commission and charges going to be on these orphaned sub area. We had a meeting prior to this, which we didn't have a lot of time to have a conversation. But we do plan on having that, you know, in, was it J C? People.
Third.
Which, you know, I would invite, you know, any other council members and participate. It's, I have, you know, a lot of concerns, you know, like, like going down in a.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you because I really like the conversation that you're, that you're introducing.
But I'm, I'm, I'm going to support this, but I think it has some concerns.
Yes, so this is the Fair Housing Resolution. This is that federal program that every year we reestablish fair housing. The Fair Rent Commission. No, but I really, the reason I didn't want to interrupt you is because that Fair Rent Commission is something really important. And the more that we say that in a public way and discuss it in a public, open public forum, the more transparency there is about this. That is a state mandated commission regarding landlord and tenant disputes. Whereas for housing is about equal opportunity for.
Oh, so I've, I've got my support. It's just, you know, how, how a good thing is translated on the state level into all different boos.
That's it, you're onto the right. Other questions or comments on motion? All right, then I'll call this, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five, I will entertain a motion on the recommendation of assistance to protect the streets and parks and the purchasing agents to authorize them there to act on behalf of the city and award, execute and administer a contract to supply and fertilize the athletic fields located in the city parks to true reincorporation of Rocky Hill, Connecticut in the amount of forty nine thousand, six hundred thirty five dollars and forty three cents to be paid from the parks maintenance account that is further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated March first, twenty twenty three.
So moved.
I heard Councilman Menegia and I heard seconded by Councilwoman Luett. Are there questions on this motion?
Senator.
Yes.
Just confirm, was this included, anticipated last year? Is this anything different than what we've been doing years past? You refer lightly?
No. No, it's no different.
Inhouse procedures.
That's correct, yes. And this is a budget of my own, so not only is it common practice, but it's something that we. Other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of all, the request of all the one four seven Market LLC for a tax abatement for certain real property located at eighty five Polack Street. And in accordance with the city of Torington's tax incentive policy as described in Economic Development Director's memo dated February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
So.
Councilman Menegia?
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Luett. All right, so we have the principal of O B one four seven Market LLC. Mr. Graham is here to answer questions you may have. And I don't know if you want to come to the microphone and just follow a little bit about this request and the project.
Greetings, thank you for putting this on the agenda. I'm Graham Murray, I'm the principal of the LLC that's supplying for this grant in this, or in the pavement, in the pavement we are proposing to convert the school building, which is tied to the sanctuary church into apartment building complex. And that's basically going to invest in the community, provide additional twenty apartment units, give or take, that would lessen some of the rent burden that the area is having and provide quality housing for the area. So we appreciate the consideration and I'm here to answer any questions you basically have.
Thank you.
Can you describe the interim to the pavement?
So according to the memo that was from the package, this property has a current assessed value of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The improvements and creation of the housing within the former sanctuary school building will increase the assessed value of this property to six hundred and ninety five thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. And in accordance with our city's policy, their, this project, because of the amount of investments, brought it to the threshold where it would qualify for a seven year tax, incremental tax increase. So the base tax will continue to be the same as it is now. And the increase of taxes and the increase in value will be restored over a seven year period of time, twenty percent in year two, forty percent in year three, sixty percent in year four and eighty percent year five, final, in the final year, sixth year, there will be one hundred percent of taxes paid on the entire value of the increased by development.
And what is, what is the, what is the statutory identification of this property? Is it market value, is it affordable housing?
Two hundred.
Yeah, so we're making the units as nice as we can be and not trying to make it like super high end in terms of rent, but reasonable in terms of it being market value. So nothing subsidized at the moment, yeah.
When you say not subsidized at the moment?
Basically fair market rent with that, basically thirteen fifty, fourteen hundred dollar a month in.
And, and just refresh my memory, what is, what is the process for revising market value to afford the housing, such as housing? That's the book of the state, right, as a process?
Yes. Yes, there's, section E is a, is a reference to the statute that. Yes, there's such an A is a, is a reference to the statute that this property would, or any property, any tenant, landlord would have to go to state and qualify the housing for that such an A subsidized housing.
And how, how long was the timeline to do that, to get that approved? I mean, is that months, years? How easy is it to convert to what I'm saying before? Which is considered like affordable housing.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing that, because you would, and if you wanted to do affordable housing, I think you would probably want to qualify in advance in, in terms of the renovation budget, and that's not something we are having in any of our plans, yeah.
Fair enough, I'm not trying to be difficult.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not on the table, right?
Yeah, trying to, trying to make some sense of the various and complex forms of housing. You know, arrangements we have in Twiten as a chapter, so I just want to be clear about your.
Yeah.
So you look at my.
Um, approximately, how many units are you looking to create and the sizes of the units?
Yeah, that's a good question, so we got a variance for twenty, up to twenty units. Right now, we are at twenty units. There are four two bedrooms and a mix of studios and one bedrooms right now, but they're modern contemporary units.
Okay, and is that the max units you can get out of the property?
Um, I, I think, I mean, if you were to, that's the maximum where, where legally allowed, right, right?
Correct, and if you want, at least there are more units that you can.
If they wanted to try to all studio, yeah, if you want to make them all studios, there's some window access issues and if you're, you could probably get a little more, but we're, we're essentially maxing out the capacity, but we're still not trying to sacrifice like quality space, you know?
Thank you very much.
Other questions?
Uh, yes, well, students, I, I guess, never mind, it doesn't matter. It's just not our purview anyway, in these, uh, school age children, whether they go to school.
Depending on their age, yes, I'm very, yeah.
Management.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I will call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And then seven. Aland Jane Washington, our recommendation of the small cities committee to authorize project approval to build well, deliver, sell, or see appropriate in amount of seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for the institution. A location of a water enjoyer and replacement of a door leading to the laundry room at three hundred, clearly you have it on.
Some of.
Second. Thank you Councilwoman Lawton, second by Councilwoman Netea. Are there questions? Unless they happen at this property.
Uh, just a quick, uh, quick clarification here. The total project is uh, seventy seven hundred fifty dollars. Uh, this person has multiple liens on the house, but they still have fifty eight thousand dollars of equity. And they're doing some good things there, as you can see, so I would recommend we accept it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lawton. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, Aland Jane Washington by the city council, here I am, number one, to approve the request of the P C A administrator to purchase controls for both the Evergreen Plum Station and Cliffside Plum Station out of phone four ninety from Newark Con C T, Northeastern Communications Inc., up in Attica, Connecticut, utilizing the state procurement contract number one nine P S X zero eight eight, as described in the W P C A administrators memo dated March sixth, twenty twenty three. Some. Thank you, Councilwoman Netea. Second, and second by Councilwoman Rowett. Uh, questions or comments on the motion?
Are these upgrades or new, are these new? Netea, these controls?
Well, these stations are very old. Uh, these are some upgrades to this part of the station.
Okay.
Um, the work we've been doing on our own, well, going through the process of doing a full upgrade.
Okay, was this budgeted already for this, or is this, uh, either?
No, no, uh, there's the funding's there for, but it's, it's, these controls need to be replaced now, basically tied together, hacked a little bit, we're doing what we can to keep them going, it's time to replace.
What was the dollar on this request?
So the request is for a ten or around nineteen thousand, you got the sixty four dollars and forty cents.
For each station.
For each station.
Yeah, okay, fair enough, thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, Aland Jane Washington who accept the building department report from January twenty twenty three. Thank you, Councilwoman Netea.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Lawton, are there questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question please. Item ten, Aland Jane Washington who accept the recommendation of the tax collector and operating tax refund as intended enlisted in March sixth, twenty twenty three.
Some of.
Here, Councilwoman Kevin Arrow, and second by Councilwoman Lawton. Uh, questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, Aland Jane Washington who accept the recommendation of the tax collector and operates assumed usage of refunds intended enlisted in March sixth, twenty twenty three.
Some of.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lawton, second by Councilwoman Netea, second, uh, questions on the motion? With a list? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, Aland Jane Washington who consider this is a fair match.
Some of.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lawton.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Kevin Arrow, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, anything to add, Mr. Kelsey?
Thank you.
All right, uh, we have, um, we have, anything from the press office?
Want to update on the.
Yes.
So we had last Wednesday, we went out to bid for the bonds for roadwork and the high school slash middle school. So for the we went out to bid, the bonds itself was seventeen million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which seven thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was for roadwork. And ten thousand dollars was for the new high school slash middle school. It's a twenty year bond. We were quite pleased, we received sixteen bids from different investment firms. Of course, the par amount, as I said, was seventeen million, two hundred and fifty thousand. A low bidder was Jeffries LLC out of New York. Uh, the underwriter's discount, that's a fee that an underwriter charges when purchasing bonds for resale to the public. That discount was forty eight thousand, five hundred and seventy one dollars, fifty two cents. So the premium paid on that by over power value was one million, six hundred and fifty nine thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and eight cents, making the purchase price eighteen million, nine hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and eight cents. And that came to us with a true interest cost of three point three six nine nine percent, which was less than what we had anticipated, so we were quite pleased. Bond anticipation notes, known as bands. We went out to bid for eighteen million, four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. We received four bids, a low bidder was Piper Sandler. Interestingly enough, though, they only offered to purchase fifteen million of those notes, and were assuming that they had those pre-sold, and that was the reason for that. Uh, their premium paid was fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars, with an underwriter discount of thirty nine hundred. Jeffries LLC out of New York purchased the balance of those notes, which was three million, four hundred and fifty thousand, with another premium payment, twenty three thousand, nine hundred and seventy seven dollars and fifty cents, with another writer's discount of seven hundred and fifty nine dollars. So the total issue summary between the two bonds, between the two buyers, was eighteen million, five hundred and twenty four thousand, six hundred and seventy seven dollars and fifty cents. And total principal and interest due on the notes will be three million, five hundred and eighty seven thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty seven cents. And the maturity date that they're due will be March fourteenth of twenty four. The true interest cost on the notes came in at three point two seven six two percent, which once again was less than we had anticipated. And Bill Lindsay had done several studies of neighboring municipalities that recently went up to bond, and it appears as though we did as well or better than, than any of them. We came in with a credit rating agency of double A minus. And I forget what of those notes were classified at, uh, uh, I forget, it was something plus, which was the best rating that a municipality could be given. So I think that can, oh, and the closing will be next Wednesday.
And I think that the only thing that I would add is when you hear about the premium that was paid for these bonds and bands, those premium funds, the city historically uses to offset the cost of the interest in the first year. We must utilize those funds, we can utilize, I should say, those funds to offset the cost of funding borrowing. That's legal counsel and fund advisors expenses and the expense of the bond rating companies that meet with us, and the balance of the funds we usually apply towards that first year of debt service to try to mitigate the impact of the borrowing on our operating budget.
Yeah, and I think just the interest alone, before first year, we close to one point two five million dollars, and we're going to be getting one point seven, point eight million in premium. So we did quite well, I think.
Any questions?
Should I make that, make this stuff available?
Yes. We probably should go a press release so that it's released to the public, and I know that the Board of Finances is going to want to receive that information, so.
Okay. I'll get it to Heather.
Great.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just trying to look up what that winning was when Phil sent it to us last. Um, but the good news was, and he was quite clear, that a bond rating continues to hold steady and that that band rating was an indication of some solid financial management that the city has exerted over the last couple of years. What we give notes to the boards that make these decisions as we are on the budget. Um, still, uh, in our department heads, anything to say?
I don't have anything, thank you, doctor.
Great job managing that storm, I know that was heavy.
Just trying, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, nothing from the city clerk's office?
Nothing, Mayor.
All right, moving into item thirteen now.
Some of.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kevin Arrow, second by Councilwoman Laura, all in favor? Any opposed, I'll go to the screen first, any of the seat, Councilwoman Lawton?
No, nothing from me, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Netea.
Nothing.
Councilwoman Rowett.
It's the back piece already. Uh, morning, what we do want to have on the, um, the next meeting on March twentieth, with the three ordinance, we'd like to have an agenda for approval, as long as the snow removal policy that we reviewed again. I was giving Netea a good cheer.
We have to ask councils, is that a public hearing?
Yes.
For both of those?
No, it's for the snow.
Oh, it's the snow, that okay. Well then, um, if that's the case, why don't we, uh, under this, um, uh, I need to have this added to the agenda, I need the motion, a second and two thirds, and then a motion to act, whichever. Yes, thank you.
Second.
All right, so, um, the, um, motion is to add to the agenda, and I know you guys, the second of a date for public hearing, I just know removal ordinance, and made by Councilwoman Lawton, second by Councilwoman Netea, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, spoken, now we need to call this motion, do a motion to schedule a public hearing for the snow removal ordinance changes, this isn't a new ordinance, right, it's a new one, this changes, it's, it is.
Changes.
Okay, very good, um, to occur on March twentieth, twenty twenty three, so, any, Councilwoman Rowett?
Sure.
That's a, by Councilwoman Netea. Uh, questions or comments on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, anything else? Uh, no, no, it's. Councilwoman Kevin.
I just have a question, Mayor, it's just information only, uh, I'm asking on behalf of a, uh, of a citizen, and I just don't recall specifically. Uh, the, uh, whether or not, uh, a meeting, especially a meeting, has a public comment, um, agenda item attached, that's at the discretion of the committee itself, correct? That's not man, mandated by the state, is it?
No, and actually, public comments aren't mandated or required in any meeting.
That's what I thought, I was sure I was reliving that correctly to this person.
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to add, anything else other than that question, okay? I just wanted to add my appreciation to the ordinance committee, I know that you've done Yon's work over the last year, incredible amount of work that's desperately needed, so um, thank you, I don't like how this is to the clerk's office, because after you do, I love the incredible amount of work as well. Um, so let's move into item fourteen, I will entertain a motion over the years of the public uh, for comment on agenda items only. Thank you, Councilwoman Netea, second by Councilwoman Rowett, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, we're open to the public, and this should be for agenda eight, please. Hearing none, moving into item fifteen, there being a further business before the board, Aland Jane Washington who adjourn.
Some of.
Thank you, I heard, Councilwoman Kevin, uh, Councilwoman Netea. All in favor? Your votes to adjourn, thank you all.